I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for October 16, 2018. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Memms?
Here.
Salee?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Throg Morton?
Here. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your city hall on this gorgeous October day. It's been an awesome and amazing day. Right, Bruce?
Absolutely.
So, I'd also like to make sure we welcome Bruce Teague as our newest member of the city council. It's great to have you here, Bruce. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And now, we have work to do.
Yes.
Okay, item two, Student Leadership Awards. We have three fine young folks from Regina Elementary who are going to receive Student Leadership Awards, and they are Caitlin Martin, Natalie Gehan, Gehan, I don't know, yeah, and Sam Abdel Malik. Would you all come up? Yeah. Okay, maybe, Sam, you could be over here. Okay. So, we already sort of practiced this just a little bit, didn't we? Yeah, I mean, you know, so I'm gonna read your proclamation, or the Leadership Award announcement, and it's identical for all three of you, except your name would be inserted in your own individual award, okay? And then, after I do that, I'll ask you to read your speeches, and we'll start with Sam, I guess, and then work over this way. Is that okay? All right. Before we do this, I should say, I used to go to a Catholic elementary school in my hometown of Louisville, Kentucky. Is this on? I mean, it doesn't sound like it is. Okay. Yeah, so Regina Elementary, I'm sure, is a really outstanding school. Okay, Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Regina Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Caitlin, Natalie, and Sam. As an outstanding student leader, your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, October the 2nd, I'm sorry, October 2018. All right, so Caitlin. You, no, we're gonna start with Sam. I just said that, didn't I?
Yeah.
Sorry. You know, it's amazing how mayors can get confused. Okay, so I'm gonna hold this in front of you. Just read your speech, Sam.
Hi, my name is Sam, and I would like to thank you for choosing me as a recipient of the Outstanding Student Citizen Award. I am honored and would like to thank the city council and my three Regina teachers, Mrs. Vork, Mrs. Davis, and Ms. Means. I believe I've been chosen for this award for many reasons. Some of them include volunteering at the free lunch program and helping my family at home by doing chores. Every day, I try my best to be kind and help others when they need it. I've played the trumpets since second grade, and I've played soccer competitively for three years. Despite all of those time commitments, I'm involved in advanced math and reading lessons at school. I'd like to thank you once again for this great honor.
Well done. Okay, and next will be Caitlin. So, would you read your speech, Caitlin?
Sure. Hi, my name is Caitlin Martin, and I would like to start out by thanking my sixth-grade teachers, Mrs. Davis, Mrs. Vork, and Ms. Means for choosing me for this award. I think my teachers chose me because I am a leader at school and like to help my classmates. Outside of school, I alter serve at my church and play on a Regina basketball team. I also play the clarinet in my school band. I enjoy leading small groups and participating in fun activities at school. I would like to again thank my teachers for selecting me for this award.
All right. So, what position do you play on the basketball team?
Point guard.
Point guard? All right. Here's yours.
Thank you.
Can you come over here, Natalie? Okay, would you read your speech, too?
Yes. Hi, my name is Natalie Gahan, and I am very honored to receive this award tonight. I like taking care of my environment and helping people at my school. I like going to school and getting my work done, and I'd like to thank my sixth-grade teachers for nominating me for this award.
Well, I know for sure there's some proud parents down here. I'll bet you there's some others right over here, and yeah.
Where would they be?
And are there others?
Proud grandfather.
Here's yours.
Hi, Derek.
Where, where's this proud grandfather? Oh, I see, back there. Former city councilman Terry Dickens. I'll bet you are proud, Terry.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, brilliantly done. Keep it up. Lead your, lead your school. Do the best you can. All right. We have three tonight. The first is Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day. Whereas the city of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas between the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. are the peak alarm times for fire deaths, when people tend to be asleep, and whereas almost two-thirds of home fire deaths in the United States resulted from fires in homes with inoperable smoke alarms or no smoke alarms, and whereas the designation of a special day to remind residents of Iowa City to change the batteries in their smoke alarms timed to coincide with the fall ritual of changing clocks would greatly diminish the chance of this tragedy occurring in Iowa City, and whereas smoke alarms should be replaced every 10 years, and whereas November 4th, 2018, is the day the citizens of Iowa City change their clocks from daylight savings time to standard time. Now therefore, I, James A. Throg Morton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November the 4th, 2018, to be Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day in Iowa City, and urge all residents to change their smoke alarm batteries and install new smoke alarms and to replace smoke alarms if they are 10 years or older. So, I think we have someone here, Todd Irwin, from the Fire Department, to accept this proclamation. Todd, come on up.
On behalf of the Iowa City Fire Department, I thank you, Mayor. A couple of other highlights. The Iowa City Fire Department would like to remind all the citizens of Iowa City and Johnson County, when you're changing the batteries in your smoke alarms, we would like for you to also push the test button and make sure each smoke alarm is operable. Also, the mayor did touch on, we ask that you replace your smoke detectors every 10 years. On the back, there is an expiration date or date of manufacturer on your smoke detectors, so check those when you replace the batteries. And also, some of the new smoke detectors have lifetime batteries, but those smoke detectors also need to be replaced every 10 years. According to NFPA statistics, in fires and such smoke alarms were present but did not operate, almost half of the smoke alarms had missing or disconnected batteries, and 24% had batteries that were dead and caused the smoke alarms to fail. So, this is very important on daylight savings times that we check our batteries and make sure we are safe in our homes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Todd. All right, the next proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm, and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life, and whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported, and whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children, and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and intimate relationships, and whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than 39 years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens, and whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore, I, James A. Throg Morton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Iowa City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. So, we have two folks who are going to accept, right? Alta Medea Peters and Alicia Packer, right? Yeah.
So, I, as those are being handed out, my name is Alta Medea Peters. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, and I first and foremost want to thank the city of Iowa City, the council, and the community for the amazing support that has been shown to victim survivors of intimate partner abuse. We truly could not do the work that we do without the financial and emotional support that you provide us. We had a record-breaking year at Shopper Shelter this year with over 6,000 items donated and over $5,000 worth of gift cards, so I appreciate everything that is done for us throughout this community. The sheets that I handed out, there are a couple numbers that I wanted to highlight for you. One of them is that we have served over 1,700 individuals in our service region, and more than 900 of them have been from Johnson County. That's men, women, and children residing here. Of those individuals that we've served, we are proud to announce this year that we have had a 96% success with safety. Those individuals that we've served have reported that they feel safer because of the work that our advocates do, and that is up by 10% in the past year, and that would not be possible without support and our doors being open. So, that's sort of one of the really exciting numbers that we were happy to see come in this year. Another one is that we've doubled the number of youth that we're helping, and that's directly related to the work our advocates are doing within the schools and within our communities outside of Iowa City. But we are happy to be reaching more and more people and shortening that cycle of violence. I did bring Alicia. She is our housing coordinator, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have. If there are any about those numbers, there's a lot of them in front of you.
No, but thanks for coming and for doing the good work you do.
Thank you.
Kelly, we need a motion to accept correspondence, don't we? For that, yeah, could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, and next proclamation has to do with United Nations Day. Whereas the United Nations was founded at the end of World War II to try to bring together a world devastated by war and injustice, and whereas the United Nations continues to provide a forum for countries to work together for security and development, to make progress toward combating disease, hunger, and poverty, to support action to combat climate change, and to encourage quality education for all, and whereas 2018 is the 70th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, in which the nations of the world defined fundamental freedoms to be enjoyed by all people everywhere, and whereas the United Nations works through a variety of agencies to provide peacekeepers in war-ravaged areas, to support refugees from wars and discrimination, and to encourage international cooperation, and whereas the United Nations benefits the people of Iowa by protecting the environment, curbing climate change, preventing the spread of infectious diseases, facilitating international air travel, and expanding markets for Iowa farm and factory products by improving standards of living worldwide, and whereas the United Nations promotes values and practices cherished by Iowans, including respect for life, the peaceful resolution of conflict, assistance to those in need, human dignity, and self-government. Now therefore, I, James A. Throg Morton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October the 24th, 2018, to be United Nations Day in Iowa City, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to join in observing this day and focusing on the vision of a world filled with peace and justice brought about by the cooperation of all nations. Is there anyone to accept this correspondence? I think Jim Olson's here.
I'm the president of the Johnson County chapter of the United Nations Association of the USA, an organization, a nonprofit, nonpartisan, membership organization that works to inform and mobilize Americans about the work of the U.N. and to build support for constructive U.S. engagement in the U.N. I want to thank the council for issuing this proclamation and also for what it does year-round to advance the ideals that are stated in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the 70th anniversary of which we're observing this year. I'd like to call your attention to two upcoming events. October 24th, as you just proclaimed, is United Nations Day, but today, October 16th, is World Food Day, and I wanted to note that worldwide, 621 million people go to bed hungry every night in Iowa. One out of six children struggle with food insecurity, and to mark World Food Day, our chapter of the United Nations Association is cooperating with the Iowa City Foreign Relations Council to host an event this Thursday, October 18th, at 12 noon at Old Brick. John Norris, who represented the United States at the, in Rome, at the headquarters of the U.N.'s Food and Agriculture Organization, will speak on policies and politics and other obstacles to feeding the world's poor. The second event will be October 24th, United Nations Day, and that will be an event from 2 until 4:00 p.m. at Old Brick. It will focus on the 70th anniversary of the Universal Declaration. Nancy Flowers, an expert in human rights education, will be with us to speak on the relationship of civil rights, human rights, and social justice. So, I invite you and all citizens of Iowa City to take part in those events, and once again, I thank you for this proclamation.
All right, if we can move on to the consent calendar, which is items four through nine. So, could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended?
So moved.
Moved by Mem, seconded by Salee.
Second, yeah.
Yeah. Discussion.
There was just one item that I missed talking about earlier, which was in the correspondence, and that was 9C, the petition to save the City Park rides. The author of the letter describes the outpouring of support received by the community members and his counselors. Many of us have stated the importance of listening to what members of the community are saying, and I've only heard from people asking us to save the rides. No one has said it's a good thing to be getting rid of them. I know it seems to be a done deal, but I did view the scenario for an adventure playground theme for City Park, which was held last week, and I'm not sure that the types of playgrounds shown is what the community really envisions, but I'll be anxious to hear the responses that were received on the cards that were provided. I'm thinking back to how we've spent a lot of money restoring the log cabins for the sake of preserving a bit of history, and I would just like to say, why not continue with another bit of history and look into at least having a train that everyone can enjoy for many years to come?
Any further discussion? So, I don't know how you intend to vote. You'll have to figure that out. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Memms?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, Community Comment. Anyone who would like to address us on any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda is invited to do so now. So, if you want to speak, please come up, state your name, and please take not more than five minutes to say whatever is on, is on your mind.
My name is Martha Witcher, and I had spoken on August 7th.
Could you speak up and into the microphone, dear?
My name is Martha Witcher, and I had spoken on August 7th in regards to Code 19A, and I noticed it's on here as accepted correspondence. So, it's kind of the same situation. I followed your recommendation and spoke with Stan Laborman's office. He came, and he looked, and KCRG was actually there this morning, and they did an interview with me and the house, and I was just wondering where this stood right now, and I still have the same disagreements that I don't believe building walls in houses is gonna stop big parties, and I think there's a big community support of that view, of those of us that have lived and have, I actually have lived in that neighborhood for 60 years. I grew up in that neighborhood, been away for a while, but still own the property, and it's not an issue with my house, and it will cause a great burden for me to slap up walls inside of a historic home. It'll change the integrity of the house, it'll change the niche that I have and the wonderful tenants I had. I've never had capacity in my house. I don't want it, and I will never have that. So, where, where do we stand with that, and is there any other information that you need from me, or is there anything else I can do?
We had a fairly lengthy work session, discussion about it during our work session, just, which started at 5:00 early this afternoon. Rockney, you want to say a little bit about?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, normally, we don't comment at public.
Be brief. We're not gonna be in a big interaction.
I'm gonna meet with Stan this week and get more detail about this particular issue, so I'll be following up and giving you a call.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
We had a very good discussion, and we're gonna get more technical information from Stan.
I really appreciate that, and I'm more than willing to find a solution. It doesn't have to be one way or the other, but maybe we can have a happy ground there somewhere, and I've talked to many people that could also give you some really good ideas, I think, too. Okay?
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Terry, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Please make sure you speak into the microphone, Terry.
Yes, I will, thank you. I'm Terry Miller Chait, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Homeowners Association at If you've had time to take a look at the correspondence that we sent earlier this week, you will know that we've had quite, quite a week out at Idyllwild, and I just wanted to add a few more details to that letter. You know, both in 2013 and in 2014, the Idyllwild residents, friends and family, whoever we could get to come help us, we filled sandbags those years because it was high-water event years, and the first year, we filled 5,000, and I think the second year, we filled 7,500, and in the high-water event this year, we filled none. In 2016 and 17, we, we spent our time, energy, and money to, to build the berm around the perimeter of Idyllwild, and this year, we were ecstatic when the berm worked, you know, the sluice gate that we had installed that, that shuts off the water from, between the pond and the river, when that worked, even though that was probably the most nerve-wracking night that we had, as, as the residents are out shutting it off, and the next morning, the ponds are so high that we almost flooded from the inside instead of from the river, and that was due to the drainage, the runoff coming from the hills. So, I do want to say that we are, we are really, really happy and grateful that that drainage channel is going to be built next year, and we're, we're concerned that we're gonna have a wet spring, so we hope that it's gonna happen quickly, and I know that some of you came out to Idyllwild a few years ago to look at the drains, the drainage area that's on the corner of Foster and No Name, and to look at the area to see what it looks like, and, you know, we really appreciated that, and, and at that time, when you looked at that drain, the one in the corner of Foster and No Name was, was and continues to be a problem in, in that it collects a lot of debris, so we, the homeowners were out there a number of times cleaning, cleaning the debris, and, and it just is kind of an ongoing So, I just, just want to emphasize that how much we appreciate that the, that the channel is going to be in place, and again, request that the pump that, we did have a pump installed to be able to put into use if we needed to. We found out that it, that it really would be a benefit to the neighborhood in that it would keep Foster Road dry as well, so our request to you is that you consider that and hopefully find some money in the budget to be able to help us out with that piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Without going into detail, I want you to know, we also discussed this during our work session, so you should expect to have city staff get in contact with you again so that we're clear about what steps are being taken and could be taken in the future, and I don't know if Jeff wants to say anything else about that, probably not, but we, we had an extensive discussion about it.
Yeah, great, and, and, you know, when we met with Jason Reichert a few weeks ago, he had mentioned that a study had been done by Terricon that, and Terricon pointed out some things that we could do to improve our berm, and so, we haven't brought our engineer into that discussion yet, but we're hopeful that that would be an important thing, that, that we might be able to take that step, because that was something that, that I think would also be helpful, to make sure we fortify that piece that we've already put into place.
Yeah, good, good. So, expects staff to reach out to you?
You know, we did bring some pictures tonight, if you want to see any of the pictures of the area at the time of?
Are they copies of pictures or just, just single pictures?
Copies of pictures.
If you want to leave us a copy or something like that, we could, just like regular correspondence, we'd accept it as correspondence. Could you hand it to Kelly when you're?
I have something to say also.
Sure. Oh, okay, all right. You mean, copies for us individually?
No, she said she had something to say.
No, just one copy. We weren't prepared for this, to be honest. It came on short notice today.
Okay.
I'm Deb Tomy, Deborah Tomy. I'm the president of Idyllwild, and I'm the new president. So, you can imagine, last week, I did not sleep at all. I have 92 families looking at me for direction, asking me, what are we gonna do? And I'm saying, I've got this, you know? I was very afraid. I was more afraid when I felt like I couldn't rely on our city. I had to reach out to a contractor that came to our aid and furnished Idyllwild with a pump for our pump for our protection, when I could not get anywhere with the city. And I just really hope that you guys really, really look at us and realize we're a member of this community. We're 92 families. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Again, I'd say our staff will be reaching out to Terri or you, if you prefer. I mean, we need to know who specifically you want us to talk to, but we fully recognize the level of anxiety you experienced, and we were quite concerned as well at that particular moment about what was going to happen to the river. But I think our staff did a lot to try to connect. So, okay, anybody else want to speak to us on any particular topic?
Hello?
Hi, Roy San.
Hi. Roy San Porter, 136 Appinose Court. I had spoken at the last city council, and on behalf of the Black Voices Project and in collaboration with the Coalition for Racial Justice, we spoke about the Neighborhood Stabilization Project that you're going to be doing on Taylor and Davis Street. One of the things we wanted, we've been in discussion and just trying to figure out some ways so that families wouldn't be put out of their homes on those two streets, was to possibly make the tenants that live in those homes homeowners. So one of the ways we're looking at it is if you could look at it and find a way where these people who live over there in that area could possibly become homeowners by partnering with the city of Iowa City and using the programs that you guys already have in place, meaning that you have a down payment assistance program, you have a home program, Section 8, and the Housing Authority have different things that we could put in place. But it wouldn't be putting families, four families, out of their homes. It would be making them homeowners, because those people who live over there who look like me, if they could get a mortgage, they would have one by now. So we know that they're not eligible, so we're hoping that we can possibly put a program together that can possibly just go forward to help others as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy San. Just so you know, earlier this evening, we agreed to have focused part of our time in our next work session on this particular topic. And I want you to know that the staff has no intention of displacing residents, existing residents, from homes in that area. The intent is to purchase from a willing seller when there's no one in the house, no one living in the house. Is that quite right? I don't have it quite right, I know, but that's pretty close. So there'll be more information about that. The most important thing to know is that in our next work session, two weeks from now, we will be addressing this topic.
We still would like to see those tenants become homeowners, Jim. It would be nice.
Yeah, that's part of the discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Melva.
Hi. I'm Melva, and I'm a concerned citizen for the people that you've slated, well, the homes that you have slated on Taylor and Davis to be... It seemed like you just said to Roy San that you were going to purchase those homes and then remodel them. I would like to suggest that if that's what you're planning to do, could those people be part of remodeling those homes and have put equity into those homes so that they can have a chance of purchasing those homes and not have a repeat that the city went through with Roseau? That's what I see this as going to. Has that been a thought that you entertain, to let them be part of the remodeling, to put equity, sweat equity into that, to give them the option of becoming homeowners?
We have not yet discussed that specific possibility. Tracy, I seem to have misspoken just a little bit. You read in our work session earlier tonight, you read a specific quote that will be contained in a letter. Could you read that again? Melva, we might address that particular recommendation in that work session discussion I just referred to.
Question. Is there any way that the public is a part of your work session, or is that closed-door discussion?
No, it'll be in this room. It's open to the public, but it's work that the council and staff do together.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I mentioned, when we go out to look for homes, we're sending a letter to landlords and homes that we think we can rehab for that price, and we'll prioritize those homes that have no tenant in them, they're vacant, or the tenant has already notified that they're not going to release. So that's what we prioritize, which homes we're going to buy.
Thank you for clarifying that. Good evening, Adio.
Good evening, and I would like to congratulate the new member. I don't know his name.
Bruce.
Bruce Teague. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
For being a member of the city council. Just last week, I... By something really make me mad. There is one kid commit a felony. He under... He's a minor and under influence of drugs, commit stupid crime. And the problem, not the crime, he get probation, but the problem, he can't live with his mom or with his dad. Because he commit a felony, and he's a minor, I don't know how this, they can handle it. If somebody minor and commit stupid crime, if he live with his dad or his mom, so they can take care of him, and they advise him, and he will be, he can go back to the community as a good person. But if you shut the door in front of him, he can't live in the public housing, he can't live even with private apartments, where he can go. So he can go just commit another crime or what to do. So when I talk to the people, they told me, the housing authority, this is their regulation. I don't think this is good regulation. If we can sit together and see how this is good regulation, I want this kids to go back to stay with his mom or with his dad, not just leave him go for nowhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Adio. Anyone else? Okay, seeing so no one else, we'll turn to item 11, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 11A, Zoning Code Amendment Related to Public Art Fees. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code of the Iowa City Code, related to public art fees and riverfront crossings. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor. Danielle Sitzman, Development Services, NDS. This is an application for, or a proposal tonight for a zoning code change to our riverfront crossings district regarding public art fees. A little quick background on the development of this particular ordinance. It stems from the master plan, which was the vision plan that established a district or the idea of a district called the Riverfront Crossings. One of the components of that plan was a component regarding art and acknowledging that the pioneering contribution artists have made to redevelopment of neighborhoods across the country by occupying marginal buildings or vacant storefronts, enhancing the perception of an area by publicly displaying art and holding gallery nights and walks, or building a creative class that helps stimulate the economy. Making plans for art to occupy public spaces is one of the ways the master plan suggested activating the Riverfront Crossings District. The master plan does identify areas, shown on this map in orange, as areas that are appropriate for public art. Of course, the implementation of a master plan is the key. In this case, the implementation tool was a form-based code. The form-based code included regulations regarding public art. One of those regulations allowed for bonus provisions that grants developments an additional story on their building if a public art contribution is made equal to 1% of the value of the project. Funds then were intended to be spent within the same sub-district as the project that contributed the funds. This is laid out in the regulating plan of the form-based code, which outlines the boundaries of sub-districts, which are showed in the different colors on this map. The largest area identified for public art in the Riverfront Crossings, for public art and open space on the regulating plan, is actually not a sub-district. It's the Riverfront Crossings Park. Since it's not identified as a sub-district, it unfortunately cannot benefit from the public art bonus provisions as written, even though the master plan identified it as a key location for the placement of public art. We've had one project to date. The first project to contribute to this public art fee was at 707 South Dubuque Street. That's the first one since the adoption of the form-based code. The project contributed 1% of its project value to art for approximately $73,000. Upon the receipt of the contribution, the city recognized the limited potential uses for the funds, both because the zoning district requires the funds to be spent within the same sub-district as the subject building, which in this case is the Central Crossings District, and also recognized that the Riverfront Crossings Park, which is the largest area identified in the master plan for public art, is not actually in a sub-district, but rather identified separately as a public parks and open space by the regulating plan. We felt this was an oversight. Oftentimes, as you implement a new plan, you work out the bugs as you go. We felt this was an unfortunate situation, since there's in particular some public art projects that are looking for funding, working their way through the process now. The Public Arts Committee is working on a relocation for one sculpture to the Riverfront Crossings Park, and these funds would definitely be of use in a project like that. Therefore, staff is recommending a code change to this section. We believe the code change would meet the intent of the master plan. The code change is to allow for public art funds received for that hype bonus to be spent anywhere in the Riverfront's crossings, rather than specific sub-districts where they're collected. This would include being able to spend the funds in the Riverfront Crossings Park. Believe that meets the intent of the master plan, keeps the fundings within a defined area, which is key to some of the provisions that have to do with collection of fee and lieu, and also provides more flexibility for the expenditure of those collected funds, and we think corrects an inadvertent exclusion in the Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code. The Public Art Committee has reviewed this with us. They discussed it in a meeting in September and unanimously recommended approval of the amendment. Therefore, at a September 6, 2018 meeting, the Planning Commission did vote by four to one to recommend this code change to you this evening. As I said, it's a fairly simple code change, is really just striking out some wording in the code as written to allow for, as I said, the expenditure of funds anywhere in the Riverfront Crossings. And I would be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Do you all have any questions for Danielle?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a good change.
Thank you, Danielle. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Hi, Thomas. Come on up.
Okay. My name's Thomas Zagren. I'm an artist, a Northside resident, professor of art, and I also work for Iowa City Downtown District doing public art management. I do a lot of public art projects myself. I don't speak on behalf of that organization tonight, but just so you understand my perspective, maybe. Also, I have a lot that I want to say about this, and I've timed it like for the past three weeks, and I'm going to talk really fast, and I might just be a tiniest touch over, but I've worked really hard to get it down. And I'm going to read it just to keep things moving along rather than rambling like I am now. So anyway, let me say first that I hope that you will approve the flexibility for the placement of art within Riverfront Crossings. In the short term, what it means is that Kenneth Snellson's sculpture, which you saw a picture of, which is probably Iowa City's most valuable piece of public art, will be rescued from deferred maintenance and correct what I would view as the city's failure in budgeting for the maintenance of our public art assets as we do for other assets. But the amendment that you have before you tonight, which looks simple, I think says a lot more than it appears. And I want to use tonight's discussion as an opportunity to speak a little bit about public art funding generally, as couched in this moment. I'll start with some numbers that illustrate the context of the zoning amendment before you today. From 1999 to 2001, the annual public art project in Iowa City was $100,000. In today's dollars, adjusted for inflation, that's $147,000. The population in 1999 was 61,000 people, which, adjusted for inflation, et cetera, works out to be about $2.45 per person. Today, Iowa City's population is larger, of course, it's 75,000 people, and after a modest increase last year, the public art budget's only $25,000, which amounts to .33 per person. So in other words, we've seen an 87% drop in per capita spending on art in 20 years, and it's a drop, I might suggest, could be entirely restored with just one-half of 1% program for the arts, based on FY '19 CIP budget, which is $28.5 million. If instead, the city continues to look at funding public art largely through a bonus model, as we're seeing right here, then we should really visit closely with how that plays out, and that's what I want to talk about. So first, through the district zoning codes, we have an agreed-upon level of appropriate building size that reduces speculation, encourages healthy communities, and smart development. And through bonuses, we trade away key elements of those standards. It's essentially a bribe whereby community assets, may they be public art or historic buildings, are held hostage, as we've seen play out. And we must beg for those things we value as a community by handing out wealth in the currency of square footage to developers. That's the equation, right? While I noticed in the planning and zoning minutes from the September 6 meeting, they had been scrubbed ever so slightly, Mike Hench, who's the chair, used that specific verbiage, bribes, to describe the incentive, which gave me pause. I'm not an urban planner, but as far as I can tell, the code says, here are the agreed-upon community-vetted rules, but over here are the incentives to break those rules. It makes no sense, and it really just makes no sense that on a $7.3 million project, for a mere $73,000, you can buy your way out of five stories and get a sixth story, increasing your rentable square footage by 20%. And that just seems like an outsized deal to me. And, you know, a bonus provision, indeed, right? Total bonus. By broadening where the money can be spent from the sub-district up to the district, the amendment before you will ensure that the city's growth benefits more people, but only a fraction more. I suggest that we spread that wealth beyond the district and unshackle the funds so they can be used anywhere in the city. Doing so would create a robust public art program that would reach more people, rather than be limited to where the action and greatest concentrations of wealth in our community are. When we agree as a community that something is appropriate via the zoning code and then give something away, I believe that the whole community should benefit, not just the property owners, their tenants, and those who happen to walk past because they live in the area. It only gilds their lily while it masquerades as a community gift. The current code creates essentially a regressive public art program where the areas of highest investment reap nearly all the benefits of that investment. By comparison, Seattle divorced its 1% program from a geographic requirement, which means that they can direct funding to neighborhoods that are often overlooked and under-resourced. There's no reason that we can't find a way to do that as we look to funding public art in Iowa City. If you look at what's poised for the Penecrass Apartments, if I understand how the code is written correctly, $100 million project like Rise would send $1 million into the public art fund, but only in this district, while the remaining, like paltry $25,000, can be sprinkled, you know, like crumbs across the rest of Iowa City. There are 171 potential development sites indicated in Riverfront Crossings, which could theoretically amount, I don't know how many of those qualify for bonus provisions, but I'm sure a lot, could amount to really an unbelievable windfall for the city. And it makes you giddy, as I saw the public art advisory council was giddy, until you think about how it has to be spent and who those funds will benefit. Just because art is in public does not make it fundamentally democratic and accessible, nor ensure that it will serve the whole community. I understand that untieing, from Ann Rossett, who was in the meeting, that untieing funding from its originating geography may be complex under Iowa law, but rather than shrug at that first impediment, I hope that the bureaucratic challenge galvanizes this council and city staff to find a way to approach public art more equitably in Iowa City. This is an important moment. Ours is a growing and diverse community, and like all cities, we have to adjust our policies and infrastructure to accommodate and calibrate to those changes. We should ask city staff, as council has done before, in many moments of doubt or uncertainty about how to proceed. about how to proceed, to examine how similar communities fund and manage municipal public art programs. Visit with those recommendations in work session and craft a comprehensive plan for a public art program that can be spread throughout the fabric of our community, one that enriches and empowers individuals, families, and neighborhoods, and one that strengthens our whole city. Iowa City should be a leader in this arena, so I'm asking you today, council, in this public hearing, to request that city staff explore new comprehensive policy. I'll end with this, because I'm sure I'm well over, which is just from the September 6 planning and zoning minutes. When discussing the uncoupling of the funding from its geography, Chair Mike Hench said, and I'm quoting from the minutes, quote, "His fear would be if funding were allowed to be spent outside the district, there may be some preferred areas that would get all of the art." And I agree that that's a concern. The commission then proceeded to vote in favor of this policy that indeed codifies those exact fears, requiring that the funds be spent only in this exclusive area. So, I urge you today to vote in favor of this amendment, but going forward, we need a real public art program, not a 1% for the 1%. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Thomas. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I need to ask the council members if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, which was four to one in favor of the recommended rezoning. If not, then we would continue the public hearing to allow for consultation with planning and zoning. So, are you inclined to support?
Yes.
So, you don't know what this is all about, I suppose.
Could I make a comment? Or I've already done that?
About the particular topic, I mean, about this point, about whether we need to consult with the Planning and Zoning Commission. If we were inclined not to support the recommended rezoning or the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, we would have to offer to meet with them, the commission, to discuss our differences.
Okay, I would offer to meet with them, if that's what I'm understanding.
But we're not, I mean, it looks like we're not going to be in disagreement with them, so we don't need to consult with them.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't want, I don't, I'm going to support the rezoning, too. Okay, so, no one else wants to speak, I guess, right? So, I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussion.
Move first consideration.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Mem, second by Taylor. Discussion.
I just see this as was obviously an oversight in the writing in the original code language, the sub-district versus district, and I think this would help to broaden the area that the art can be used. And I said a very long time ago that I'd love to see a large art piece there in Riverfront Crossings. I won't go back and mention what piece we were talking about at the time, but I think it beautiful that could be seen from Highway 1, as far as Gilbert, or from the administration building, so I think it's a perfect location for art. So, I'm in favor of it.
Anyone else?
I got to say, when I came into this meeting, I was viewing this as a relatively routine vote, but Thomas made me think, and I just got to say, that was one of the best presentations I've heard in a long time. It was very good. So, it didn't even seem like it was more than five minutes. I think you raised some absolutely legitimate questions, which, one way or another, in terms of how we move forward with public art, we absolutely, and I guess I'm channeling Kingsley again in terms of equity toolkit, just sort of getting us to always think about that, that when we do have these public art or investments, that we're making sure that we are being equitable in terms of where we make those investments. So, just as a technical question, I don't know if I could ask staff a question on this. Is there anything prohibiting us from making the public art funds available beyond Riverfront Crossings?
Eleanor, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I think it's problematic because we're in the land use context, and we are, you know, this is a, the Riverfront Crossings plan, and as you remember, is a very comprehensive plan for this particular area of town. And I think you'd be hard-pressed to find something in the comprehensive plan that would lead to the conclusion that the public fund should be uncoupled from this area. I think there's also, you know, the height, the exchange, you get the increased height, whether you agree with what, how the exchange has come down or not, but the exchange is, you get the extra height because you're then going to satisfy a need that's created by the increased density, et cetera, et cetera. And that's within that Riverfront Crossings area. So, I think from a land use perspective, it's problematic.
Yeah. And the only thing that I would quibble with a little bit in terms of some of the comments that have been made, I think we are going to see some income diversity in that neighborhood. When they're South Dubuque, we have a Lytec project, which is going to be adding a lot of those additional units. So, I think we will get more socioeconomic diversity, and with our affordable housing policies, we're going to have a lot of funds that are going to be available in that district. So, I'm going to vote yes. Thomas made me think a lot. I think those were excellent comments, and I think, at least from my perspective, although it's beyond the scope of this vote, this is definitely something I'd love to follow up with you on, follow up with other people on, in terms of making sure that, you know, setting aside this particular issue, that we are making sure that we're getting public art investments throughout the community. I am going to vote yes, though.
Others?
I basically agree a lot with what you just said, Rockne. I mean, I think Thomas made some points I hadn't, certainly hadn't thought about. I think Eleanor, at least at this point, has answered the question of being able to move it out of that district, and I think we need to look much more carefully at that to see if there is any way, and really, is that the intent? I mean, I think Eleanor made a good point in terms of you're saying you're increasing density, so you need something in exchange for that increased density, in this case, the artwork. I think the 1% is something that we might want to review at some point. If you're getting a whole nother story for 1%, is that really, is the city really getting enough benefit for, in comparison with what the developer is getting? So, I think it does open, I think Thomas has opened, has made some comments that opened my eyes to some things that we may want to go back and look at in more detail, but certainly with what's in front of us now, I think this is an improvement that is very much warranted.
Yeah, I think this particular issue with that particular piece, I support applying the, making the zoning code amendment. As I think those who have spoken thus far, these larger issues that Thomas has raised, I think are important. You know, our funding for public art is down dramatically. It needs a more reliable, more robust stream of revenue or funding to work with, and I think the question of how we achieve that, whether it's through our CIP program or percentage of particular projects, you know, there are various ways in which it can be done, there are various ways in which those funds can then be distributed, I think, throughout the community. So, that's the larger consideration for another conversation, but I do think, you know, I support this particular amendment.
Anyone else? So, I have a couple of comments. The first has to do with the art, and I'll skip, I'll move through this really quickly. I personally don't see the artistic merit of that particular piece of sculpture, though I'm open to being persuaded by talking with Thomas or others in the Public Arts Committee. Yeah, I just don't see it, but there you are. And I completely agree, completely agree with what Thomas Aiglin said, especially with regard to the height bonus provision as currently written. I think it is wildly askew, just wildly askew. And so, but neither of those points pertain directly to the question at hand, which is whether we want to rezone the, or change the zoning code. So, I'm going to support changing the zoning code, but I strongly believe we need to change the height bonus provision. And you opened up my eyes, too, about the larger question about funding for public art. Any further discussion?
I guess I'll just chime in here. The reason for my hesitancy was mainly because, sorry, the limiting within a certain district. And I would agree that it should be citywide, only because if you're thinking about what happens when you have too much funds within this area and the arts are there, are sufficient, do you continue to put art there? Or do you, you know, replace it, and what happens when it's replaced? So, I mean, I do see where there would be value in just making it, having some provision, that it can be, you know, shared throughout the city. I don't know if there's any loopholes, what, let's say if the art is already done within that community and they want to replace it, that art can be taken to other parts of the community. So, that was just my only concern. I mean, if you, if you're, if this is going to be a high-density area, there's going to be, you know, whatever that percentage is of bonuses or funds coming in for the arts, it could be astronomical, and the needs for the art could supersede. I mean, you can have probably too much art for this area, but you'll have to spend the money on the art. And so, that's where I was a little hesitant, but Eleanor did make it kind of clear that it would be a challenge, I guess, at this point, to even put it outside of that area. But that was my only concern, is that if there was any way for us to broaden the language where, if the funds are greater than the need, that we could use it throughout the city.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, I understand the point. Just to be clear, no developer is automatically entitled to a height bonus associated with public, providing public art or any other potential amenity. That's a matter of judgment, whether to provide that bonus is a matter of judgment, that in the initial stage is a matter for the, our staff design review committee to consider, and then if there are more than two stories of bonus involved, it's something we decide. Yeah, so, we should not assume that there's, you know, millions of dollars of public art money that's just going to be floating around. That's not the situation.
And do we have, can we, any money that is like allocated for art, can we do anything else with it within that community? Or it has to be going to art?
Public art.
Public art.
That can mean a whole lot of different things. It doesn't have to be a sculpture, but it's public art.
Is that the murals? Would that include the murals?
Could be murals. I'd also like to make one point, and we, as Danielle mentioned, we're still, you know, seeing how this code plays out, too. This was, this was not the first building to receive a height bonus, but this was the first building to receive or to utilize public art. The other unique thing about this particular building was that the height bonus did not increase any of the rentable square footage. It did not add a floor of apartments, as you would think. It became an issue on a kind of a technical building issue where the underground parking, the kind of the foundation was exposed higher than the code allowed. So, they got to a point where, you know, they had to get going on the construction project, and by code, they added a floor, but it didn't add rentable square foot. So, you know, that's something that we didn't anticipate either. So, we're kind of, we're going to have to adjust at some point. I know the council wants to have a discussion kind of with a broad view on all the height bonuses, and staff wants to have that, too.
I'd forgotten that we had that discussion many weeks ago and about why this height bonus was involved. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing not, roll call, please.
Mem's? Yes. Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Item 11, Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center rezoning. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 5.82 acres of property located at 1914 South Gilbert Street, 1805 Waterfront Drive, 260, 306, and 346 South Gate Avenue, from intensive commercial CI1 to neighborhood public P1. So, let's see. Staff has recommended that we continue the public hearing and defer first consideration to allow the applicant more time to obtain signatures for the conditional zoning agreement. So, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody who cares to speak about this right now should feel free to do so. Okay, seeing no one, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing and defer first consideration to our November 6 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mem, second by Taylor. It's a voice vote or roll call? Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 12, University Sale, 516 Fairchild Street. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 516 Fairchild. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Melva.
Thank you. From reading, from reading this, it looks like that you've already selected a building that you're going to rehabilitate. To me, this looks like the same discussion with Davis and Taylor. Again, I would like to suggest, when I watch the rehabilitation shows on TV, and when they use people to put in sweat equity, that reduces the cost, and here I see this as been one of those opportunities that you've already got a sale price here at $220,000. I don't know how you're going to get somebody to buy it, but I don't know, maybe you should, well, maybe not a lottery, but find somebody interested in owning the property before you rehabilitate it, and give that person a time, a chance to put in sweat equity. When somebody has an opportunity to build from the ground up a potential permanent resident, they have pride in it, and then they become taxpayers. So, that's just my two bits on this property, as well as the property that you're looking at on Davis and Taylor. From the comment, it seemed like that she was saying that you were going to wait until the properties were vacant, but people that already have homes that are not aware of the funds that I've seen posted in public places to renovate their homes, I'm just asking that you give them a chance to take a home that has already had people living in it for 20, 30-some-odd years and, you know, give them the chance to have their home rehabilitated, and give them that pride of a decent place of living, and they're taxpayers. So, if you want some money, that's one way of getting it, I guess. Take a look at that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Melva. Anyone else?
Roy San Porter. In University, when this was first proposed, Susan, I know last meeting you had said that neighborhood stabilization is not about affordable housing, but, yeah.
Not exactly that, but...
Okay. Yeah, that's what I received off of it. But when you go back and look at how this was first put out, it was about affordable housing here in Iowa City. So, I'm just asking questions. Can you, can y'all give me some insight on how this has nothing to do with, I mean, the wording has changed from the beginning, when it was all put together at the very beginning, it was about affordable housing, and now that affordable housing piece has been removed? So, that's my question. I would like some answers on that.
Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, second by Taylor or Thomas. Discussion.
I didn't want to talk about this each time, yeah. I just really want to emphasize this to the public and my council for, I'm not against University program. I love it, it's good, but as Roy San Porter mentions, that also by me going back to the, you know, the first proposal for this program, it meant to be affordable, even though Susan Mem's multiple time, she told me, University City is not affordable housing. And I just went back and I found out it meant to be affordable. In fact, let me put... In fact, let me put my glasses on, I found out an art interest article on the university, the University of Iowa FYI news for faculty and employees.
When was this?
That was a long time ago. I guess when this has been, this was March 2, 2012.
Twelve.
Maybe this is like when they proposed this, I don't know. But, you know, interesting, say, "University Neighborhood Partnership Offer Affordable Home Ownership Option Near University Compass." Then this is about affordable. I don't know why suddenly it's not become that, maybe have something to do with, when I was in here. But I, all of you, and you know, the, the city and the council members, you guys trying hard to do something like, not to segregate the community by income. This is also like concept I've been receiving from you all, that you, you don't want like the low-income people to be concentrated in one place. And especially, you know, Jim, he, he really like, want to see the community, you've been talking about this a lot, you want to be see like low-income is spreading out of the, like the whole city, so people can live, different income can live together. I think this is the opportunity. 69 houses of University City has been sold out to almost, I guess, white people who's not low-income. Why we don't kick two birds by one stone? I, I really love the programs, and we would like to stabilize the neighborhood. It is important to do that, and we would like, also, we have the concept of is breeding some like, like people who are low-income are like among the city. Okay, that's good. Through those two concepts, I really wish if the council member will really think about modifying the University City program for, to make it like affordable. So we will try to reach out our affordable, you know, to reduce our affordable housing crisis, and the same time, all these houses now, it was like around downtown area where we don't have a lot of low-income people live here, you know? And it meant to be affordable from the beginning. That's really what I want to see. I'm not against this. I really like it, but I like to kick two birds by one stone. Thank you.
When the University City program was started, I would say that the term affordable was used, but not in the same context that we are using it today in terms of specific income levels, all right? It was used in a very generic form. Tracy, you've been around, correct me if I'm wrong when I get done, please. It was used in a very generic form in terms of trying to stabilize neighborhoods, take some houses out of the rental market, get them to be owner-occupied, and offer them essentially to, you know, potentially beginning-level, you know, employees or professors at the university that were the lower-income levels. And when I say lower, I'm not talking about 30, 50, 80% AMI. I'm talking people that are still 120, maybe 200% of area median income, but still, the housing near the university was so expensive that they could not buy housing in that area. So yes, the, and I wouldn't have known if you hadn't read it, Maz, if the word affordable was in there, it was in there, but it was not used, I would say, at all in the same context that we are always using affordable housing now, when we are talking about meeting the needs of people at the 80, 60, 30% of area median income. So it was, it was mostly for neighborhood stabilization, to reduce the number of rental properties, to provide housing for a lot of university people, I think, at the time when we first started, university employees closer, closer into the university. The, the challenge with trying to change that program to be truly affordable, as we talk about affordable housing today, and meeting, you know, the 30, 60, 80% of AMI, is that those properties close to the university still are very, very expensive. And so it is, I mean, even this one, I think it's, what, $220,000? It is basically impossible for the city to buy these properties and to rehab them and be able to put them on the market for a price that meets any kind of affordability guidelines for people within those lower AMI numbers that we're talking about with affordable housing. So Tracy, if you can follow up with my mumbo jumbo and...
Pretty close.
I assisted writing the application for university back in, I think, 2011. The main purpose of the program was to bring a balance of renters and owner-occupies into neighborhoods that had a high concentration of rental housing. There was a component of affordable housing, but like, like Susan said, the word affordable means something different when we first started the program, because we allowed people up to 140% of the median income to buy the houses. So it was a much higher income threshold. That being said, this is a 65th home, 19 of the homes that we have sold, we've sold to homebuyers under 80% of median income. So there's affordability component. Does, that doesn't mean that every house that we buy, we're able to do that. If we have to buy a house at $170,000, $180,000, $190,000, we can't get to that level that someone under 80% can afford it. So where we could, you'll see Douglas Court Homes, or those really smaller homes that we were able to do it, but some of those homes on Governor Burlington that are massive two-story homes that, they're in that $200,000 range, we weren't able to provide as affordable like how we identified affordable for our federal housing programs. But we did provide 19 homes in the program so far.
Thank you, Tracy.
It's important to note the spatial component of this. When this idea first emerged in 2011 and 2012, the idea was that it would be a university-city partnership. The idea was, there are all sorts of neighborhoods close to the university that are, have very high percentages of rental housing. What is it in, in the north side neighborhood?
Over 50%.
Well, it's over 50%, much higher than that, I think, but over 50%.
Well, just single-family duplex units, over 50%.
And, and at the same time, university, the university had difficulty enabling faculty and staff to, to own properties near the university, and they wanted to make it possible for them to live near the university. So two birds with one stone, that was the purpose back then. And like, like Susan said, the, the fundamental purpose was not, quote, affordability, as we think of it now. But this particular house was purchased for $145,000. It was in severe disrepair, especially in the internal part of it, as I understand it, and it cost us more money to repair it than we thought it was going to cost. That's the way I understand it. Yeah, couldn't hear you.
It cost over $150,000 in rehab.
Yeah, but we're reselling it for $210,000, is that right? Is that the number?
Hmm.
Yeah, so we bought it for $145,000, we rehabbed it, and now we're reselling it for about $210,000.
I understand, but we can use another fund of affordable housing and, and just make it affordable for other people. There is many ways, there is, there is fund there, we can use it to make it affordable. And even when, when Susan said this is bad, affordable is not meant to say, you say, I will really forward you this article. You say, "You do not have to be a brain surgeon to comprehend the benefit of such program and consider the price attached." The property, you don't need to, you don't need the income of the brain surgery to own home within walking distance of the university. And it say even at, at that time, the university provide like 500, 5,000 down payment if you are employees of the university. Like, they were doing something. I, I just want to see same thing being happening, like on this, like paying from the, we have another fund that we can use. We have some fund, we'll sit down there for the next year, why we don't sell them? And you're telling about the partnership between, between the university and the city. When are we going to do low-income and city? Like, the very low-income people and city? Anyway, we would like to see something like that happening.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
It's public hearing.
So what I just heard was that you've already purchased this house, and you purchased it for, well, it wasn't even half of what you're selling it for. But my understanding is that you're going to do four units on Taylor and David, Davis, and put like $50,000 into rehabbing those houses. So do those houses, once you do that, is that going to be for low-income people? And then this one here, you're saying that it's, you're selling it for $220,000. It's a little confusing there as to how the one on Fairchild cost $150 to rehab, but you're only going to put $50,000 in the four units that you've already, or, I don't know if you've already got them on that area.
No, we haven't.
Are you looking?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So what's the difference in, why are you putting $50,000 into rehabbing four units? What were you going to sell them for?
We, we just rehab, this is about putting some money into one house, and the ideal would be to put $50,000 in the rehab, but it costs more, because it turned out to be more expensive than we thought. So that, that's, that's its own situation. So what, what specifically are you asking?
Well, I'm trying to figure out, you have in this paragraph, the house has on Fairchild has already been rehabbed, and then you're going to sell it for $200,000 to someone with income availability, eligibility. So how are you determining who's going to be able to purchase this house if you're not making it affordable housing?
Tracy, could you answer that question, please?
Households under 140% median income.
Into the microphone, please.
This house we purchased, we rehabbed. We had to spend a lot more on rehab than typical, so we budgeted two homes worth, so where we had the budget to do five homes that year, we knew that it was so extensive, the rehab, so we combined, so this basically, we only did one home instead of two because of the work that was needed. The, the program that we're proposing for Taylor-Davis, that's federally funded, so the homebuyer has to be below, under 80% of median income. The homebuyer here, there's no federal funding, the homebuyer, buyer program just had to be under 140% median income. To afford a house at $220,000, you just have to have a higher income.
So how many dollars is that? You say percentage, how many dollars is this person?
Oh, what's 140%?
Yes, dollars. Is that, $850,000 have to be their annual income, or?
No, it's like 100 and, I'd have to check, but 80% is like 60,000, so whatever, if anyone wants to do quick math, what 140% would be?
Of, of $220,000, is that what?
Oh, no, no, it, income has nothing to do with, the 220 is the, the purchase price of the home. They have to pay $220,000 to buy the home.
Right, that's right.
But their income, income can be quite a bit higher than what a federally subsidized project would have to require.
We're, we're getting too much involved in a one-on-one conversation there.
I was just trying to get clarity on the income availability for purchasing the house on Fairchild Street versus what you're doing on Taylor and Davis.
All right, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, Commitment of City Funds for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Proposal. This is a resolution committing $200,000 in fiscal year 2019 general funds to the Iowa City Housing Group, LLC, Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved, second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Tracy, did you or someone else want to give us some, for the public, give us a brief overview of this?
Sure. Sand Development applied for housing, this is the same developer that did senior housing over in Correville, correct? All right. We do have a representative from Sand Development here tonight, if you have questions for the developer, too. They proposed to build 32 rental units, correct?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-two are affordable. Okay, so 36 total units, 32 will be affordable. It's a Lytec project, a low-income housing tax credit project. It's located off of Herbert Hoover Highway, east of East Berry Drive. It is income-targeted because it is a Lytec project, so I have that breakout. So out of the 32 affordable, four will be affordable at people below 30% of median income, 11 at 40% of median income, and 17 at 60% or less of median income. Then there's that four-market-rate units. Do you have any questions for the developer?
I do.
Okay.
Hi, Megan Sankar with Sand Development. We came before you last winter, January timeframe, to do annexation for the property and interim development. We, back in March, the awards were selected, we were not funded, but due to federal funding, Iowa Finance Authority received additional tax credits, and we were notified in August of this award. So that's why the timing may seem a little off. So, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I have additional information.
I guess first, I want to say, this is awesome, you know? This is really great that out of 36, we have 32, out of 36, we have 32 affordable, which is great, great, you know? I, I love it. The only thing is, I was really wishing to see that the three-bedroom could be like more than that, at 60% of the area median income. I understand that you guys request 200, but also, I hear there is some discussion going on, on HCDC about how the city can increase that 200 so we can have more unit, like, some of the unit, like, less price, especially for the, you know, the 60, 40 or 60, you know, percent of the area median income. Again, this is great, but I know that you guys also own of the Coral Ridge apartment or something like that? Yeah. I really concerned about the management. How you guys can do the management? Because I know there is concern on Correville about the management. I start hearing people saying, you know, some, like, there is no, like, onsite management, and some people have to call, no answer. There is was some time issues, elevator, and, like, some kind of concern. That's why I would like to know, even though you have it affordable, and I know 32, 32 will be affordable, which is people who are low-income, going to live there and everything, but we need a good management for them as well.
Absolutely.
And can you tell me about what you think the management will be, look like over there?
Yeah, so we manage around 35 low-income housing tax credit communities in Minnesota and Iowa. Coral Ridge has our manager on site, I believe, two to three days a week. So I think some of it, it's, they are shared between two properties, one in Cedar Rapids and one in Correville. And so, and they're both low-income housing tax credit communities, so they're split between the two properties. And then we hired, to address some of the callbacks, we hired an additional part-time temporary leasing agent on site to answer phone calls and get phone calls back and make sure someone was in the office. So, and I'm always available. If, if there's a particular resident or something that would like to speak directly with me, they can reach out to me directly. I can give you my card if you would like. And we've been in contact with the city about any, any concerns that residents have voiced to them or whatnot. And we've been also talking with the Housing Trust Fund to address any concerns. Correville's a new area to us, so there was some bumps along the way, but we're hoping that we got those all worked out. We have, I believe by the end of this week, we should have 51 out of the 56 units occupied. 48 out of the 50 tax credit units in the building are hopefully occupied by the end of the week. So I think we have one, we're at 46 or 47 as of today, and there were movements happening this week, so.
Yeah, and I don't know, is this question for you or for the city? I, I know that, like, say, for the Riverfront Crossing, the 10% that affordable that, you know, it come with the Riverfront Crossing regardless. I don't know how you monitoring the affordability on that, like, how the city will know if they're really renting it this way or not. For this, is this going to be monitoring by the tax credit policies or something like that, or the city have also to track that?
Yep, so we record a land use restriction agreement on the property, which agrees to keep it affordable for 30 years, a minimum of 30 years. And then with that, there's a syndicator who buys the tax credits, and they closely monitor to make sure that, they audit every single file.
Mm-hmm, great.
Initial files, and then on an annual basis, and IFO does, Iowa Finance Authority does the same. They do file reviews and audits to make sure that all the tenants are within the guidelines to, the initial, when they initially occupy, they're within the guidelines. So, and then what happens is if a tenant moves in... So, and then what happens is if a tenant moves in, let's just say they move in and they're at a 60% area median income, and then maybe they get a higher paying job or something changes in their income status, they're not required, it's required to be annually recertified because it is a mixed income, so it's low income and market rate. But they can continue to live there, but then the next available unit that becomes available, regardless if it's a market rate or tax credit, needs to go to a tax credit recipient. So we keep the balance.
Sure. Okay, yeah, just checking, making sure. Yeah, but thank you.
I'd be happy to leave my card if you have a particular individual that would like to reach out to me.
Great, thank you. This is really awesome.
I know you asked something about the three bedrooms and 30%.
Yes.
There are two three bedrooms that are at 30% levels and five three bedrooms that are at 40% levels. So it's a, it's a mix. We have to kind of balance it out with being able to afford a mortgage on the property. So we have four units that are at 30%, 11 at 40%, and those are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units.
Yeah, I guess because I saw like, one bedroom of the 30% over here and one for the two-bedroom and two for the two-bedroom, like, only four for the 30, like, 30% of the area median income. I guess I was wondering if, even if you get like more money, you can have more units, so like, because of the 60% we have high, even though say for one bedroom, 60% is 774. This is, this is, you can find, like, even not affordable units in the city, you can find less than that. You know, one bedroom, you can find it for 600, can find it for 740. I know a lot of, you know, one bedroom could be fine for 740. That's why I'm thinking, yes, if we can reduce that, if you be receiving more money from the city or from...
Yeah, we can easily run the numbers if the city is interested and we can have more discussions with the Housing Commission and Tracy to determine what number that would look like. I mean, it's just a matter of plugging in the numbers and kind of making sure.
Yeah, but really, thank you for doing this. This is good and I hope like more developer to come and follow your footsteps on that. Thanks.
That's what I'd like to say also. I really like this project because I think it is a nice mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. We haven't seen many projects coming before us that are, that are three-bedroom and the income levels also. And I would hope, as Mazza here just touched on, that other developers will follow this lead because this project shows that there are financial resources available to develop affordable housing units. You folks have obviously found that out. Rather than continuing to build, trying to reach the oversaturation point in this community, why not these developers lead the way by leveraging these same resources that are available and bring a project before us that will truly benefit the entire community like this one? Thank you.
So I'll make sure I understand a couple of facts here and just make sure they're fully on the table. In this project, there would be 32 affordable units, housing units. Four of them would be for people who earn less than 30% of area median income. 11 would be for people, households that earn less than 40% of area median income. 17 would be for households that earn less than 60% of area median, median income. So, yeah, so that's one thing. And I'm looking at a table about proposed sources of funding that was in a document, I think you put together. I don't know about you personally, but you know, the firm.
Yep, I did. I just have to pull it up to make sure.
Yeah, it's number, Roman numeral 12. Proposed sources of funding. And I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. What I see is $450,000 coming from the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, new request is the way it's listed, and another 325,000 coming from the Housing Trust Fund and $200,000 coming from the City of Iowa City for low-income housing tax credit projects, right? So that's just under $1 million being invested in affordable housing in that part of the city, which is a pretty dramatic shift from the way things have been done before. So we have a mix of very high, well, high-quality affordable units at varying levels of income and a substantial amount of money being invested in this. So this, this is no simple thing. It's, it's nothing to sneeze at. It's a major action on our part.
Tracy, do you know, we give a lot of money to the, the city gives a lot of money to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. Is some of this money that's coming from the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County actually city money?
Yes.
I just, people talk about the city giving even more money. I think people need to understand how much of that million dollars is actually Iowa City money.
Yeah, the lion's share of it is. It pulls in some of the state funding that goes to the Housing Trust Fund, but the lion's share is from our check to the Housing Trust Fund.
Because we gave them what, over 600,000 or 500,000?
500 last year, 325 the year before.
Okay. So I just want to clarify that most of that money coming from the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County is actually Iowa City taxpayer money.
And Johnson County don't have anything to do with this?
Yeah, some of the additional funds would have come from them. The Johnson County funds have to be loans. Some of ours can be in the form of grants. Ours have to be within Iowa City. There's some other caveats there.
But still Johnson County will be in Iowa City, too. We are in Johnson County, don't we?
Right, right. Yep, they all go into the same pot, so in the accounting of it, you know, some of those dollars can be shifted from one project to another, but yes, the state, the county, and the city are the three significant funders of the trust.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 14, Adopting City Flower. This is a resolution adopting the Black Eyed Susan as the city flower. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. By ma'am, second by Thomas. Julie, did you want to address the flower?
I do want to address, just briefly, Project Green representatives are here tonight. They've been a great supporter of landscaping and beautification through the city. This was their idea. They appreciate the time that you're taking to consider this and to pass this. I believe Cindy Parsons wants to say just a couple of words if you, if you want.
Hi, Cindy.
Hello. Here I am again for Project Green. I think most of you are familiar with our organization, except maybe our newest council member. But Project Green, this is our 50th anniversary year. We were founded in 1968 and ever since then, we've had a really strong partnership with the City of Iowa City, and we appreciate that so much. And we work closely with Parks and Recreation and Julie and her staff have been fabulous. And also, we, some of you may not know, but we run our, money is run through the city treasury, which is a little odd, but it's been great to work with the city treasury folks as well. So we appreciate so much everything you've done for us. Just, these are, Diane just passed out, this is Diane Allen, she's my co-president. And also here are Jennifer Wagner, and it was actually her idea to do the city flower, and Laura Hawkes, who is our landscape architect. And so we, we all operate as a team and we're a totally volunteer organization. We have no paid staff and we're just, we, it's a labor of love for all of us. So since 1968, we, some of you may know, but we've contributed over $2 million to Iowa City and community beautification, and it's something we're very committed to and plan on continuing to do that. Our most recent, and kind of our ongoing project, as most of you know, is that down at the Ashton House, and we saw a few of you there at our garden party in August. And right now, it's a little wet down there, but, but our landscape architect, Laura, has been very careful to, our new plantings are a little submerged right now, but they've all been designed to be either flood resistant or flood tolerant, and so we're, we're hoping for the best when they, when they come out. But one, one project we're, we have underway at the Ashton House this year, we committed to plant, since it's our 50th anniversary, plant 50 trees down there. So Laura has worked on a plan, and we originally were going to plant those this fall, but since it's so wet, we're continuing it till the spring. And so I said we may have to do 51 trees for 51 years next year. I guess the only other thing I'll just mention, when, when we did get a REAP, as I think all of you know, we got a REAP with the city, the city got a REAP grant in, two years ago, I guess, for $150,000 plus, and we made a lot of really great improvements at the Ashton House, but that was just phase one of our, our plan. And so we have a whole phase two to make it more accessible, make it more attractive to people with, with more pathways and benches and more parking and just, you know, a lot of nice improvements. So you'll probably be seeing that come up in the CIP coming up here, and we, we hope for your support, and we're just, we're thrilled to continue our great partnership. So thank you so much.
And we'd like for you to use those seeds that you were just given, that were collected in Cindy's garden, in your own yards as spring starts up next year. So find a real sunny spot and dig them in and, and hopefully they'll start popping up all over town, so. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much for what you're doing. Anyone else? Okay, discussion? Well, it's, it's kind of interesting how this item follows the low-income housing tax credit proposal. You know, I, I think on council, we often talk about, what I sometimes think of as the bread and roses, although I think in this case, it's the bread and black-eyed Susans of, of our community. And so it's, this is kind of a nice delightful initiative. And my gosh, there's so many ways in which it kind of ties in with Iowa City in terms of the colors and the goldfinch. It was, it was interesting noting that the goldfinch is the, which likes the seeds of the black-eyed Susan, is the state bird. So it's sort of, and Iowa City being the former state capital, there's some interesting aspects to this selection, but it's, I think it's a very appropriate and important in its own way, just as an emphasis on the importance of our native landscape.
Yeah, I know this is a labor of love for you and, you know, Project Green, I mean, you've been around for now decades quietly doing your work. You know, in Iowa City, we have a lot of people that like to talk, like myself, but just sort of the quiet work that you do throughout our communities, making our communities more beautiful, just mega kudos to you. I'm really looking forward to putting these in my yard, and just even the concept of spring, it's a little bit remote, but something to look forward to. So thank you very much for the work that you do.
Yeah, really thank you, great, you know, and this is new information to me about the flower. It's really nice, and thank you for the seeds, too, yeah. Thank you for the volunteer work that you do. Thanks.
I noticed that the flower is said to represent justice. That's very sweet, I like that a lot. Spring's just around the corner. It's a long corner. I know winter's coming, but spring's just around. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could we have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Thomas. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, city, item 15, City Council Committee Appointments. There are four separate committees here involved. One is the Iowa City Assessor Evaluation Committee. The second is the Johnson County Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. The third is the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County. And the fourth is the Rules Committee. Now, all four of these committees had been occupied by Kingsley Botchway, and the preliminary notion is to ask Bruce to occupy those positions, and now that Kingsley is gone, right? So the question before us, once we get a motion on the floor, I guess, the question before us will be whether those sound like reasonable appointments, and if not, what we need to do. So could I have a motion to, I can do them all at once, right, and then discuss them? Could I have a motion to appoint Bruce to all four of these positions as just described?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Cole. Okay, discussion.
Bruce, are you agreed to take?
What does Bruce think?
Yes.
Hey, I'm game.
So you would be on the Metropolitan Planning Organization regardless. This is kind of not a Kingsley deal. So that one's a done deal. You and I talked a little bit about the Assessor Evaluation Committee yesterday, I think?
Yes.
Yeah. And I said that at first, I thought, this may not be a good appointment for you because you don't know anything about, I presume, you don't know anything about the city assessor's office, and therefore it would be difficult to evaluate it. What did you tell me?
I'm well aware of this assessor by being a property owner, so, of various properties.
Yeah, so you have pretty good insight into how assessments work and the kind of experiences that property owners have when the assessment's too high or whatever, right?
Yes.
So it sounds to me like Kings, Bruce could well be a good appointment to that committee. The Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee? Any thoughts about that? I mean, are you comfortable with that? I don't know what.
I'll be doing the CIT training on Thursday. So, and our agency has, I've been, I've been a part of that in the past, so.
Okay, all right. And the Rules Committee, how many times has the Rules Committee met the past three years, Pauline? You're a member of the Rules Committee. Yeah, it hasn't met. Bruce, I don't think, I don't know if you heard that, the Rules Committee has not met over the past three years. I think about once in the four years.
It's not met? I was trying to say I can be on that, it's not met for three years.
You could be.
Good. Maybe then it would strike me.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, take some pardon of Bruce, and I have only one committee that I'm in. Maybe I can be on this, but, you know, three years, huh? I feel just like something really functioning.
Does anybody have any problem with that? I mean, it makes sense to me. Okay, so we're gonna have to amend the motion, I guess. Could I have a motion to amend the motion to have Mazza here serve on the Rules Committee instead of Bruce?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now the main motion, which would be to appoint Bruce to the first three committees that I described, and Maz to the Rules Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Who knows, you might have seven or eight meetings this year, Maz.
Right, now that you're on it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, item 16, Council Appointments to Boards and Commissions. So we have one appointment to the Airport Commission to fill a four-year term. So we had two applicants for that position. Do you folks have a recommendation? What do you want to do?
I really have, I want to recommend Bishop for that.
Yeah, one of the current members, I thought gave us a really good analysis of the two from her perspective, being on there. She thought they were both very, very qualified, but Warren had more experience, relevant experience, and so that, I think Warren Bishop would be a good candidate.
I agree, because both of them seemed to, obviously had experience with flying in the airport, but Dr. Bishop seemed to have, in his explanation, a really great knowledge of, of what the commission is, the purpose, and Mr. Claire just, he had actually admitted to limited knowledge, so I think it's, it's important to have that knowledge going in. So I like Dr. Bishop.
Okay, any objection to appointing Dr. Bishop? Hearing none, could I have a motion to appoint him to the Airport Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 17, Announcement of Vacancies. We have two, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Two vacancies, no, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Appeals, and the person must be an HVAC or building professional. Three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission. Two vacancies to fill four-year, a four-year term on the Parks and Recreation Commission. One, let's see, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on the Public Art Advisory Committee. One vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Public Arts Advisory Committee. And one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for those positions... One vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Public Arts Advisory Committee. And one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 13, 2018. And the applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We also have vacancy, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street District. And one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunication Commission. Those vacancies will remain open until filled. Okay, item 18, community comment. Gustav, did you want to say something to us tonight?
As my friend Austin likes to say, happy spooky month. So I wanted to let you know about two events. You probably know about one of them. The first event is the Fresh Check Day, which is basically a day put on by students to, about mental health awareness and just checking up. And that's gonna be tomorrow at the Hubbard Park, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, if any of you are interested. And of course, the Homecoming Parade, which is this Friday. It's an exciting time. It's one of my favorite times to remember as a kid, sitting alongside and having a great time. And now I'm here as a student, so.
Are you parading?
Big time. I'm not sure yet. We'll find out. All right.
Thanks, Gustav. Would anybody else like to say something in the community comment period? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to item 19, city council information. So remember, we did not do the boards and commission reports in our work session, so we can do that now as well. All right, so let's start with Pauline and move to the right.
I do not believe I have any board and commission to report on. So I'll move right along to community events that have happened and are about to happen. Of course, last Saturday, 13th, in the afternoon, I attended Councilman Bruce Teague's swearing-in ceremony. And I have to say that if the warmth and support that filled the sanctuary during the ceremony carries over into your service on the council, it's going to be a great pleasure to work with you. It was just a really wonderful ceremony. I really enjoyed that.
Saw you clapping and singing.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Yes, got into the, got into it. Oh, and that reminds me, sometime we'll have to have him sing. He and his family have wonderful singing talent, so it's, it's good. Saturday evening, I attended the Center for Worker Justice Gala Event. I won't say too much on that because I don't want to steal Maz's thunder. She'll probably have something to say about that. But turnout was amazing and the food was excellent. But I did want to mention that one of the speakers said that Iowa City is a stronger community because of CWJ, and I think that that is certainly very true.
Thank you.
I do believe that. Previous weekend, Saturday the 6th, I did attend City of Literature Event. Again, I won't steal Rockney's thunder. He probably has a lot to say about that. But I did attend a reading and discussion at Merge by, surprise, the Icelandic author, Sion. He wrote a book called Codex 1962, An Anthology. So it was really interesting to hear him speak, and it was well-attended, his event. But there were also many people milling around the lobby, viewing the displays. And I think our community is really blessed to be able to have this kind of event and these kinds of things going on. Let's see, Wednesday, the 10th, I attended, Julie left, the Parks Discussion of the City Park Plans at Robert Lee. It was very informal with the entities given the opportunity to view the plans, potential options for the adventure playground. And it was nice to see a lot of families with children there, and even the children were filling out their, their comment cards, which was good to see. Upcoming Wednesday, the 24th, the Human Rights Award Breakfast, 7:30 AM, bright and early at the Hilton. The 25th, Hyatt Grand Opening at 5:00 PM. Let's see here. Oh, Friday, this Friday, the Vianic Ribbon Cutting. Hopefully you folks got invitation to that. It's at 1:00 PM, and I'm gonna try to make it over that because I think this is, we talk about repurposing buildings oftentimes, and I think this is a good example of that. And I'm anxious to see what they've done with the inside. And then, of course, since it'll be actually on our, our next meeting date is Tuesday, November 9th, vote. Remember to vote, or before then.
Six.
Or sixth, I said the 9th, didn't I? Sixth, yes, sorry.
Now, don't wait till the 9th.
Where the 9th's going, don't wait till the 9th. No, the 6th. That's it.
Okay. Bruce, you can skip if you want, but you can go ahead.
No, I have some stuff. So on October 5th, I attended Humanize My Hoodie, which was put on downtown at Merge. And that was by Andre Wright. That was a great event. Even on the 12th, they had, Friday the 12th, they had another event, which was in the alley downtown, and it was a fashion show of some of his products. And so that was awesome to see. Saturday the 13th, I got sworn in. And so thanks to Kelly and for doing her magic and getting me all official. And of course, to the council individuals that did attend and all those that are, you know, they're supporting me. So really appreciate it, very honored to be here. I did, I'm looking forward to, of course, the University of Iowa Homecoming this weekend or this Friday night. I will be there and in the parade. Something that is upcoming will be, is One Iowa, and is for the LGBTQ Workplace Culture Summit. And that's gonna be in Cedar Rapids at Kirkwood. I do know that the city, I thought they bought some tickets for that.
I think there are some tickets available if anybody else is interested to go on the 23rd.
Yes, there are some tickets available. And then just as a shout-out to Lux Interiors, Jan Faleisen, she has a new business, well, her business transferred from Correville to Iowa City. And on the 24th, they'll be having an open house and a pumpkin carving contest. So that'll be starting from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and that will be on October 24th.
Terrific.
Okay, first thing, of course, the gala, but you know, really, Pauline Teller, she done a good job on describing that because when it come from someone who's not working there, it would be great because I don't want to see it sound like bragging, even though I brag all the time about CWJ. But everything you said, it was really nice event, good food by the, you know, immigrants.
The food was amazing.
Yeah, I know all those people are seeking to open a restaurant. I think, I hope they can find the opportunity to do. Okay, and what else? Yeah, I'm gonna be going, yeah, the rally for, yes, please join University of Iowa Season for Human Rights for a rally tomorrow to save the Labor Center at 5:00 PM at the Pentacross. And this will be tomorrow. On Friday, I had been invited to speak, to be a keynote speaker on a refugee summit in Des Moines as the first immigrant to be elected to Iowa City City Council. So be setting the standard in Iowa. And I guess this will be a great event, and I'm really happy to go there and looking forward to it. For the, regarding board and commissions, we, the Barisi Transit not met yet, November, I guess November 8th or November 7th will be meeting. So I can't report then on that. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay.
So sort of combining the two again, with the City of Literature, the last time I had spoken, we were talking about upcoming events. And I was able to make a couple of events at the City of Literature event from October 1st through the October 8th. And I gotta say, what really took my breath away was the lecture by Common at Hanschard Auditorium. I got a confession to make. I didn't actually know who Common was. Don't be too hard on me, Roy San. But wow, what a positive message. If any of you in the audience have ever heard him speak in terms of the lecture format, you know, I don't want to get into the national and state politics that we have now, but there is needless to say, a little bit of toxicity. But Common was just sort of a breath of fresh air. He had a really positive message. Not only is he a rapper, he's a writer, he's a musician, but he also has his own nonprofit called Common Ground that works with low-income youth to facilitate graduating from high school. I think he has nearly 100% success rate. Learned that he actually attended Obama's church, Jeremiah Wright's church on the south side of Chicago. And just a really great message. And it was well-attended. The house was packed. So I'm really hoping that people can sort of follow up on that, and hopefully we can learn some lessons from Common. But just very impressed with him in terms of what he brought to the table. And I'd really love to give a shout-out again to the City of Literature Board and John Kenyon. You know, when we talk about our City of Literature, we've had it for nearly 100 years in terms of being a City of Literature. But formally, we've only had it for about the last six to seven years, our UNESCO designation. But John has really taken that and made it into a reality. And it's not, it's not easy to do, to bring in the caliber and the quality of speaker, just the logistics. And he does it with a smile on his face. He always keeps us cool. And so just a terrific event. Major kudos and looking forward to future events with that. I'd echo everyone's comment on Center for Worker Justice. Food was fabulous. We even had a few presidential candidates there. So it was just a great opportunity to break some bread and meet some people and have some good conversations, and that was terrific as well. And I would echo also Pauline's comments about rally to save the Labor Center, 5:00 PM tomorrow. That's really what that Pentacross is for, is an opportunity for free speech and to speak out and uphold our values. And I'm certainly gonna be there, and I hope other community members will attend as well.
Just as a footnote, Rockney, we provided some financial support for Common's visit.
Oh, yes.
I don't know how much. And I wrote a proclamation which was delivered to him.
Yep.
Well, I'm, mine's very short. I, no commission reports. And my sister was in town for a while, so I kind of dropped out of the Iowa City scene for, for a little bit.
You're in Cora, were you?
Lots of great events that I missed, unfortunately. And everyone has kind of spoken about future events. So that's it.
Missed the food.
Attended ICAD's annual meeting last week. Had a great presentation. Is always good to hear an update from staff members and what they're doing. And speaker on, I don't even know what he was talking about, Jeff. I said to Matt Hyatt afterwards, I said, "That went right over my head." It was very esoteric, artsy, futuristic. But I was like, "Some people think and can plan and look that way." And I said, "I'm not one of them." But it's, so it was interesting. But really good to hear update from, from all the ICAD folks and what's going on there. Attending Economic Development Luncheon tomorrow that they're putting on at Merge to raise money for United Way, so going to that. PATV has their grand reopening on the 18th, which is Thursday afternoon at 4:00. And Shelter House is having a celebration on the 19th to rename the Fair Weather Lodge also, so. And other than that, yeah, I'm kind of like you, John, I've been out of town. Well, I've been out of town, you've been here but with a guest. I've been out of town, so just haven't connected with some of the events. But just lots of great things going on, as always. And Access Center, we delayed that tonight, again, because of some signatures. There was just a couple little glitches. That ended up being more than one parcel. And the owners of both parcels weren't exactly the same entities, and so that's kind of what caused that little glitch. So it's taken, some of the owners are out of the country, so it's taken longer than they anticipated to get some signatures. So one of the things I did mention to them, because they are anxious to get going, is hopefully that we would, assuming they have all the signatures for the next meeting, which would be the November 6th meeting, that we might entertain consolidating the second and third readings when we get to that. So since it doesn't, at least at this point, I don't think we're gonna have any controversies, so. Other than that, we are in early voting, so I would encourage people, they can go down to the auditor's office, I think like from 7:30 to 5:30, I think.
Starts at 7:30.
Yeah, every day during, during the work week at least. They certainly will have some satellite locations coming up. Just check the Johnson County Auditor's website. But certainly encourage everybody to make sure they get out and vote.
I voted.
I'm going to, and I've already put my, my two cents in with Jeff to make sure that our agenda for the 6th is short. So, I mean, I think we're all gonna want to go home and be watching the results. So that means the agenda's short and the comments are shorter.
That's hard for this council, though. Come on, Susan.
You have more influence over the length of meeting than I do.
I know, Jeff. I thought it was gonna be short tonight. Use those little cards, those time cards.
All right, I can put an end to this if I get on with it, so.
Speaking of getting on with it.
Pauline and I had an excellent meeting with Janet Godwin and Paul Rossler on the 3rd of October. And voluntary transfers was the main topic from their point of view and really the main topic of our conversation. Our Convention and Visitors Bureau Board is gonna meet this Thursday, the 18th. The Partnership for Alcohol Safety plans to have another late-night walk around downtown this coming Friday, the 26th. So we're gonna go into bars and probably come out of bars and stuff like that. And let's see, other things, other things, other things.
Will you be drinking?
I drink beer.
I love it.
I like beer.
I know, we know where this is going.
I wonder if there was an invite.
Pitchers, right.
All right, I also attended the ICAD's annual meeting on the 10th of October. On the 11th, I made welcoming comments at the Conference of the Iowa Chapter of the American Public Works Association. Wasn't one of my greatest days, but, you know, you can't do everything perfectly. I plan to attend the Community Foundation of Johnson County's Grant Awards Luncheon tomorrow, but I just looked at my notebook and see, I didn't write our meeting down at 11:00, and I don't have it down for next week either.
Jeff says that's fine.
So I don't know, we'll have to talk about that.
We can talk afterwards.
Yeah. Let's see, what else? I think I'll go to the United Nations Day Celebration on the 24th. Other things that, that Pauline has mentioned, like the Hyatt Place Hotel Grand Opening and other topics like that. I plan to attend the Immigrant and Refugee Association's Annual Dinner on the 27th. And, and so on. I want to mention a couple other things, though. Let's see. On November 7th through 10, 7th through 10, I'll be attending the National League of Cities Meeting in Los Angeles. That's why I couldn't be here for those special work session about 12:00 Court. And October, and on October 4th, I can't talk, October the 4th through the 8th, I traveled to Bend, Oregon. I did that for personal reasons, but while I was out there, I did a lot of driving and walking around with my friend David, who's lived there now for the last three years. It was really interesting. It's similar in size to Iowa City. Has very similar governmental structure, but it's much more dependent on tourism and on retirees. It's very clear. But there are a lot of young people there, too. A lot of young people, and that may be a reflection of the tourist aspect. The downtown is really very attractive. It's larger than ours, very attractive, very lively, very successful, as best I could tell from walking around one night. I did not see any tall buildings out there, but, I mean, I could make a big deal out of that. But I think that's a reflection of the tourism and, and the retirees, but not, they don't have a big university there. They do have a university, but it's nowhere near as big as ours. All the, this was a real shock for me, all the major roads looked like they had been repaved or resurfaced within the past three years and restripped within the last three years. It was just amazing. All of them were smooth, not a crack in a single one of them. No potholes, no nothing. So I think that must have to do with freeze and thaw.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Of precipitation. Nonetheless, there it was. I kept saying to David, "Well, God, it's another street. Been repaved. How'd they do that? How'd they pay for it?" Anyhow, there was that. I also want to mention one last thing. I think all of us have received an invitation from Angie Jordan in the South Districts. Inviting us to tour the South District with her so that she can point out some areas of concern. I followed up on that invitation and agreed to join her at 2:30 PM on Saturday, the 27th, for a tour, followed by a neighborhood meeting at the Broadway Center. Susan, I think you also said.
I did, and I, and I did a reply all, since that was just a scheduling and not a discussion, and I wanted everybody else to know that I had done it so that we don't get more than three of us there. That was my intent. That was my intent.
Yeah, and I've said that to Angie over and over again. So, if any one of you would like to join us...
I did send you an email saying that I was available, but it was probably during the meeting here, or close to the meeting.
That's okay. The key thing is, we cannot have more than three, and we have three. So, you want to go?
Absolutely.
Okay, good deal. So, we, did, you got the dates and time and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's it for me. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley?
Two quick things. One of them being an update of interest. We are starting to have our first internal staff meeting about the climate plan and our work that's going to be happening at a staff level to implement the climate plan actions. So, that'll be next week. And the other question I had for council was whether you wanted us to reinstate the, like, the council tours of our departments and introductions, kind of reintroductions to what we do. So, we've toured the water plant, wastewater, the airport. So, there is another point of interest. I'm happy to set that up. I don't know if Fridays still work for everybody, but that had been what we were doing. And so, I'm thinking of restarting if there's interest.
I can say one thing I don't know that we've done before is tour, I don't know, NDS, the Finance Department.
Great.
You know, and other departments that are in the building.
Sure. They're, they're on my list, and I will note that now.
Okay.
Thanks. That's it.
Eleanor?
Just a quick note. The, the city is running its charitable giving campaign during the month of October. We had a great kickoff event on October 6th, Friday, October 6th. I think Mazza was there. And you can donate to either United Way or Iowa Shares. And if you need a pledge form, let me know, or any other information.
Yeah, I forget to report that. That's what, I said, "I forget to report the event we had." Yeah, it was nice.
Good deal. Okay, Kelly? All right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second by Mims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.